Oh, some of them are sitting next to me.
Like to call the Menor City Council Regular Meeting of June 18, 2020 Forward Order. Invocation tonight will be given by Councilman Marn.
Heavenly Father, we thank thee for this day. Help us use good judgment for the business at hand and guide us in wisdom with a continuing sense of truth and fairness for the community we represent.
[inaudible]
[inaudible]
Truly, please call the roll.
Mr. Marn.
Here.
Mr. Blake.
Here.
Mr. Donovan.
Here.
Mrs. Dowling.
Here.
Mr. Freeman.
Here.
Mr. Kirchner.
Here.
Mr. Krieger.
Here.
Okay. Counsel, you are in receipt of the June 4, 2024 Regular Meeting minutes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Okay. Tonight, we start with two public hearings. First public hearing has been called, is now called to order and being held pursuant to notice of duly published and posted according to law. Ordinance number 24-0-042.
An ordinance amending the codified ordinances of the city of Menor 2006 as amended and the official zoning map by rezoning of approximately 8.16 acres from M1 Light Manufacturing District to B2 General Business District at 6010 Heasley Road, permanent parcel number 16B0640000230, and declaring an emergency and providing for the submission of this ordinance to the electorate.
Ken, let's start with you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll ask Planning Director Cantan Zerini to make some comments initially.
Thank you, City Manager and members of council. The applicant is proposing to rezone 8.16 acres at the corner of Heasley and Hendricks Roads from M1 Light Manufacturing to B2 General Business. This parcel has been vacant and zoned M1 Light Manufacturing since the city was established in 1963. The remaining acreage excluded from this rezone is not planned for development due to the existing wetlands on site. This rezoning request was considered by the Planning Commission at their May 2 meeting. The subject property is proposed to be split into three parcels. Parcel one containing 4.2 acres is proposed to be developed with a gas station and car wash constructed in the initial phase of development. The site will be accessed from both Heasley and Hendrick Roads. The proposed service station site includes a retail store, a fuel pump island, and a car wash with vacuum stations. Parcells two and three containing 3.9 acres are labeled for future development. A market report has been submitted outlining the justification for the rezoning to the B2 General Business District. A traffic impact study was also required and recommends two turn lanes connecting to the gas station parcel, which had been added to the initial phase of the development as recommended in the study. At the May 2 meeting, the Planning Commission recommended approval of the proposed rezoning of 8.16 acres from M1 Light Manufacturing to B2 General Business District and the preliminary development plan for parcel one by a vote of six to one. The recommended rezoning is further conditioned with the five items outlined in the ordinance before council this evening. Please let me know if you have any questions regarding this request.
Thank you, Kathy. Is the applicant here tonight? No? No? Okay. All righty, moving on. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak in favor of this ordinance? Hearing none in either direction. I will close this public hearing, and we'll move on to the second public hearing for tonight, which has also been publicly posted and orders being held pursuant to notice duly published and posted according to the law. This is ordinance number 24-0-043.
An ordinance amending the codified ordinances of the city of Menor 2006 as amended and the official zoning map by the rezoning of approximately 14.5 acres located south of Atkins Road and northwest of Reynolds Road, State Route 2 interchange from R4 Single Family Residential District to PRD Planned Residential Development Overlay pursuant to a development plan permitting the construction of 45 homes and a clubhouse, providing for the submission of this ordinance to the electorate and declaring an emergency.
Ken.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mrs. Cantan Zerini, please.
Thank you, Mr. Philippiac. And members of council, I'll just spend a little extra time on this one. This is only the second time we've seen a planned development overlay proposed, and the last one was five years ago. So bear with me as I give a little bit of extra explanation. As stated, the applicant is proposing a zoning map amendment to add the planned residential development overlay to the properties located on Atkins Road that are currently zoned R4 Single Family. Under Chapter 1158, Planned Development Overlay Districts state that an overlay is an addition to the current zoning where the overlay is superimposed over the existing zoning designation on the map through a map amendment, signifying that both zoning designations apply to the specific properties. This formal rezoning request was reviewed by the Planning Commission at their May 2 meeting. The purpose of the Planned Development Overlay District is to encourage and accommodate unique, well-designed developments consistent with the city's development and planning policies and which would not otherwise be permitted in the residential districts pursuant to the zoning ordinance. The planned residential development specifically provides developers with a flexible framework to develop a residential development comprised of a mix of dwelling unit types and integrated open space without the need for commercial. The developer is proposing 45 fee simple residential lots on 14.5 acres. This includes lots for detached single-family cluster units and lots for standard detached single-family units. The Plan Development Regulations allows for a maximum density of four units per acre. As proposed, this development will have a maximum of 3.1 units per acre. The design of both single-family unit types was included in your packet, which will conform to the design requirements that are set forth in the Plan Development Regulations. On May 2, the Planning Commission recommended approval of the proposed development with recommended conditions, one of which was for the applicant to continue discussions with building and fire to determine appropriate building materials and building distances that would be safest to prevent the spread of a fire. In response to this recommendation, the applicant had a few discussions with the administration, including Fire Chief Searls and Chief Building Official Dan Perno over the last few weeks. The applicant has since made a few updates to their development plan, which is presented before you this evening and dated 6/17/24. To summarize, as long as the builders use a one-hour fire-rated wall as stipulated in Condition Number Four of the ordinance, the administration included fire and building is comfortable with a 10-foot side yard separation for single-family dwellings and an eight-foot side yard separation for single-family cluster units. Again, these measurements are from building projections, not from the actual walls. If it's just the walls, then it would have to have a minimum 10-foot separation. So, the applicant has adjusted their development plan to account for these proposed separations while maintaining the same number of lots proposed, the same as just 45 units. One of the other suggestions by administration was to adjust the location of sub lot 23 so that it is now in line with sub lots 15 through 22. On the original plan, it was actually separated from the other units on the cul-de-sac. So with these minor lot adjustments, the amount of open space actually has increased to 3.80 acres from the original plan, which was set at 3.11 acres. The street layout and recreational amenities have not changed. If council were to recommend approval of this development, the administration would propose a few updates to the language outlined in the conditions of the ordinance. I have these recommended text changes if council would like to consider them. The applicant is also here this evening if council has any questions for them.
Okay. Thank you, Kathy. Would the applicant like to come forward and present his development plan and put it up for discussion? And if you could, please state your name and your address for the clerk, please.
My name is Pat Perino with Perino Builders, 7976 Mayfield Road, Chester, Ohio.
Jeffrey Small, 20th Century Construction, 2167 Menor Avenue, Paintsville, Ohio.
Chuck Zucks, Polaris Engineering, 34600, Chard Road, Willoughby Hills.
Thank you. Please, tell us what you want to do.
Or if you'd like to introduce what the overall development is.
Yeah, we can go ahead. So, this is, we are an EPCON franchisee. It's going to be developed as an EPCON community. EPCON communities, if you're not familiar, they do have a website that you can look up their information, but they are geared for active adult communities. So if somebody that lives in the area that wants to downsize their house but stay in the community, this gives them the option to stay in a community that's geared for the active adult. And it's geared for more 55-plus age people, although you can move in if you want to. But a lot of the deed restrictions in the community, there's no basketball hoops, there's no sheds. So we're really restricted to kind of, for the people that want to just come home, not cut their grass lawn, so that's all included. It's a maintenance-free community as well, if I didn't mention that. So it's more for people who don't want to maintain their yards and things like that but still want to be active adults in the community. So in the community, there's a clubhouse and some amenities as well. So it brings people together, similar age, similar demographics, that want to still be social and active in their lives but not have the maintenance of a big house. So these houses are two bedrooms, two bathrooms on the first floor, and we gear them for no steps as long as they don't have basements. Or if they want to add a bonus room, then there's steps. But usually, the houses are built for no steps into the house, out of the house. So you can kind of age in place and age in place in the community. And we're building one in Concord as well. It's a 59-lot development. We have about two-thirds of our first phase sold, so that one will have a clubhouse and a pool. So, go ahead.
And then we're building one in Sheffield. We just got our model spec house, and we're putting in, right now, the swimming pool's going in, and the clubhouse will be started. We sold, we've got five reserved there already, and we just put the streets in. And what we're finding is a lot of people, myself, I'm 64, are looking for alternatives, and, you know, they're looking to be around people. This is more for socializing people that like to be around people and want an active community. Like, I grew up in Collwood, all the front porches, and everybody knew everybody, and that's what these neighborhoods are geared up for. There's a lot of them through the franchise in Columbus that have done extremely well, and they're known for their quality. When you walk in these houses, they may be 2,100 square feet, but they explode. In other words, the openness of the homes are really awesome. And you can go see one at Jeff Scott or myself. Ours are being ready to be drywalled now in Sheffield. And we partnered, you know, I have the west side, Jeff's got the east side, and I found the property, and I called Jeff and said, hey, why don't we just partner up on this and do it together? So he agreed, and so here's where we're at. So we're excited about it. We're excited about what we're going to be doing in all the communities, and we know, as we all know, we're all aging, you know? We're looking for, you know, lock and leave, be able to not worry about it. We're talking about in some of the areas doing social gardens and that sort of thing, and they're doing them in different areas. So, yeah, they're closed amenities, they don't create any more traffic, they generally don't create any more people in the school system, so it's more taxes and less problems.
Okay, thank you.
It's a win-win situation.
President?
I'd like to make a comment. I went over and talked to some of the residents. I let them know that this is actually, we're getting into design and planning and all that almost, and this is to rezone the property. That's why we're having this discussion. I let the residents know that we do need this type of development, and some are for and some are against. Would you know, because it's R4 now, and I told them, someone can come in right now and do an R4. It's zoned, R4.
Kathy probably could answer that more than-
So, they understand that we could fight for everything we want and get all the beautiful design and bushes and trees and entranceways and all that, and maybe move the clubhouse, move the pickleball, stuff we're going to look at later if this makes it through the electorate. So I did let them know that something can go in there now with not much of a say because it's R4. We could get into design and all that, but they have concerns as usual. A lot of people have a lot of property where they're looking at it for a long time, or they're mowing it and taking care of it, and it's really not there sometimes. But I just want them to understand that this hearing here is to rezone it. That's all.
Sure. Well, one thing, you know, to put their fears aside, I mean, if it was a church parking lot, which I think it can be, or it was zoned for a bus stop or something like that at one time, you know, this is going to raise their property values and their home values. This is not going to be something that's bad for them. This is going to be something that's good for them and the city. Without growth, we die. We know that. And this is something that's not going to hinder the police departments, the school system, and is good for the aging community to be able to, you know, to have, to stay at Menor, not leave.
Yeah.
You know, we find a lot of times, we, as developers, as builders, we find that people want to move in neighborhoods, they don't want anybody else to move in after them. But we know that doesn't work, you know? So, this is a good thing for them, it's not a bad thing, and it's a good thing for everybody.
Thanks, Pat. And you don't have to remind us how old we are. And-
All right. Thank you. We're going to move on with the public hearing on this. Is there anybody here who would like to speak against this development plan and rezoning? Hearing none. Is there anybody here who would like to speak in favor of this? We've heard from you, so thank you. So, okay, so hearing none. At this time, I'm going to close this public hearing on 24-0-043. We'll probably have you back up in a couple minutes. Council will sure have questions for you on this. So moving on, tabled legislation, we have none. New legislation, ordinance number 24-0-042.
An ordinance amending the codified ordinances of the city of Menor 2006 as amended and the official zoning map by rezoning of approximately 8.16 acres from M1 Light Manufacturing District to B2 General Business District at 8010 Heasley Road, permanent parcel number 16B0640000230, and declaring an emergency and providing for the submission of this ordinance to the electorate.
Ken. Ken, anything more to add on this?
Anything to add, Mr. President?
Move to suspend.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Okay. So ordinance number 24-0-042 will advance to the November ballot for the residents of Menor to vote upon this. Ordinance number 24-0-043.
An ordinance amending the codified ordinances of the city of Menor 2006 as amended and the official zoning map by the rezoning of approximately 14.5 acres located south of Atkins Road and northwest of the Reynolds Road, State Route 2 interchange from R4 Single Family Residential District to PRD Planned Residential District Overlay pursuant to a development plan permitting the construction of 45 homes and a clubhouse, providing for the submission of this ordinance to the electorate and declaring an emergency.
Ken, anything to add?
Yeah, I would add, Mr. President, the Planning Director did indicate that we had a couple of suggestions that council may wish to consider on the conditions resulting in this. I don't know if you're planning on moving forward tonight with adoption. We would perhaps ask you to entertain those. If not, we would submit them to council for your consideration and any amendments you might want to make to that language in subsequent readings.
I think my suggestion on this is that we put this on for next reading, our next council meeting. Week from tonight, we get the results of our housing survey that we've been waiting for a couple months on. And I'd like to see how this would plug into what that survey says we need in terms of housing here in Menor. So, I mean, that would be my suggestion. I know we've got-
Mr. President, generally, in the past, we've always had it fall to the ward councilman.
You don't want to wait for the housing survey to see how this-
Asking the ward councilman.
I think we should move forward. I know we've talked a lot over the years about, we need this. Kathy, you've done some smaller studies, Kevin. I believe we're in the need of this without a survey. And the survey's going to come, and it's going to say, this is what we need. I would like to move forward with it.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mrs. Dowling.
If we have our, get our survey results, and there's still nothing that would stop this from being on the November ballot, is it? I mean, we're not, we have time, it's not going anywhere. It's going to be on the ballot in November, so we have the time to have more discussion.
We do. Even if we put this off for a second reading, the developer will have plenty of time to get this on the November ballot.
But is the deadline sometime in August, I would assume? Joe, do you know?
Correct. If the council does take action at its July meeting, that would be more, assuming it's to advance it to the ballot, that's more than sufficient time. The Board of, our charter does require a 60-day advance submission. The Board of Elections will honor it. They've honored it in the past, but it is extremely difficult based upon, you know, printing absentee ballots and things of that nature. And so they have cautioned the city to use that 60-day charter requirement as more of a safety net because they can't guarantee that ballot language will be timely approved by the Secretary of State, and of course, there could be other hiccups along the way. So, in any event, those are advice from the Board of Elections, and we're certainly mindful, as we have in the past, to try to work with them and harmonize the charter and what it requires with practical difficulties that they experience in getting things on the ballot. But to circle back, there is plenty of time if council acts at its July meeting.
Mr. President, one more thing.
Yes.
I think we put a lot of developers and landowners and people and builders through, and it's okay. We put them through a lot, spending money on these drawings and doing a lot of work with our economic development, and to delay it again, to delay it at this point, I don't think it really does us any good, and the voters are going to vote on it anyway.
Move to first reading.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Marn?
No.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
No.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Okay. So ordinance number 24-0-043 is going to be for a second reading. Next is ordinance number 24-0-044.
An ordinance to authorize revisions of appropriations and declaring an emergency.
Ken.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council. Council, this ordinance actually does two very minor things, two appropriations, one in the Public Works Department for additional maintenance work to be done to city facilities, and the second would add additional funds to the street fund in anticipation of the two ordinances on your agenda this evening, asking you to approve the annual road program. I ask for your approval.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
ordinance number 24-0-044 has been approved. Next is ordinance number 24-0-045.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to award a bid contract to TC Construction Company, Inc., for the concrete road repair program and declaring an emergency.
Ken.
Thank you, Mr. President. Council, this is the first of two ordinances for our annual road program. This is for our concrete streets, which represents the largest portion of the work to be done this year. I'll ask Mr. Swigger to talk about this in one second. I will point out that one of the add-ons to this is the work to be done in Menor on the Lake. We're partnering up with them again. They have not officially approved the arrangement with the city of Menor, so typically, you will see that accompanying our agenda. We're still going to ask council to approve all of the add-ons to this, but obviously, we won't enter an agreement until that legislation comes before you and is approved. Mr. Swigger?
Thank you, Mr. Philippiac. Three bids are open Friday, May 17, for the 2024 Concrete Road Repair Program. Project will provide full-depth concrete repairs to portions of 14 city streets. The bid package consisted of a base bid and five bid alternates. The 10 streets included in the base bid are Pine Cone Drive, Highland Court, Kellogg Creek, Remington Drive, Stonewood Drive, Industrial Park Boulevard, Traymore Court, Mockingbird Lane, Ren Court, Norwood Drive. Quantities under alternate one will be utilized for work within Menor on the Lake. The quantities within alternates two, three, four, and five permit additional repairs to be performed on Jeremy Drive, Diamond Center Drive, Packard Court, and Van Buren Court. The three bids received for the base bid and all of the alternates ranged from a low bid of about $1.3 million to a high bid of approximately $2 million. It's been determined that TC Construction Company of Willoughby Hills, Ohio submitted the lowest total bid of $1,259,962.50. The engineer's opinion of probable construction cost for the project was $1,310,000. A review of the bid from TC Construction Company indicates it's in conformance with all contract requirements. Therefore, recommend that a contract be awarded in the amount of $1,259,962.50 to TC Construction Incorporated. The scheduled final completion date for the project is October 31. Thank you.
Okay. Counsel?
Move to suspend.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Okay. Ordinance number 24-0-046 has been approved. Next is resolution number 24-R-018.
A resolution authorizing the adoption of an alternative method of apportioning the local government fund and declaring an emergency.
Ken, I'm going to come to you. You carried a lot of the water on this.
Hey, thank you.
Avenue west of 615 and for Johnny Cake Ridge Road east of 615. The five bids received for the base bid and all alternates ranged from a low bid of approximately $900,000 to a high bid of approximately $1.2 million. It was determined that Phillips Paving LLC of Chagrin Falls, Ohio submitted the lowest total bid of $891,820.40. The engineer's opinion of probable construction cost for the project was $933,000. A review of the bid from Phillips Paving LLC indicates it's in conformance with all contract requirements. Thank you.
Okay.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Mern?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kirschner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Who do approve?
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Mern?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kirschner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Okay. Ordinance number 24-0-046 has been approved. Next is resolution number 24-R-018.
A resolution authorizing the adoption of an alternative method of apportioning the local government fund and declaring an emergency.
Ken, I'm going to come to you. You carried a lot of the water on this.
Thank you.
You did a lot of work on this, and it's appreciated because it benefits City of Manor and it does a lot to equalize the playing field, so you got the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, council, you will recall that back in 2014, the county commissioners adopted a resolution that effectively, in their minds, eliminated the currently, in effect, local government alternate formula. Under Ohio Revised Code, there are two ways in which local government funds derived through funds provided to the state of Ohio are distributed. One of those methods is through a statutory formula, which only one of the 88 counties in Ohio utilizes. The other 87 counties utilize an alternate formula, which they have gotten together at some point in the past and agreed to. In our case, the currently existing alternate formula, which has been upended by that 2014 legislation, was in effect from the early '80s, so over 40 years we've been under that same distribution method. It took quite a while for a determination to be made by the county prosecutor, which was done last year, to determine that that action by the county commissioners actually rescinded that alternate formula. So without enacting a new alternate formula, we would have been forced to utilize the statutory formula, which in the eyes of everyone in Lake County would have reduced the amount of distribution to virtually every local jurisdiction within Lake County and would have increased the overall percentage of that total local government fund received by the county. So after many, many meetings and a lot of good negotiation among the different jurisdictions, a formula was arrived at. It provides what I think everyone believes is a much fairer distribution of the total funds received by Lake County. Some counties increase their funding percentage, will increase their funding percentage if this formula is adopted. Some will see theirs reduced, but I think everyone was satisfied that the manner in which this would be implemented would provide some level of security to the communities that would be losing money and provide a slower progression of gain to those communities that would be benefited in the end by this. In order to see this formula be adopted, it requires the county commissioners to approve a resolution in favor of it. They've already done that. It requires the city of Mentor, as the largest city, to approve it, which you're entertaining this evening, and then 12 of the remaining 22 jurisdictions, or otherwise more than 50% or more of the remaining jurisdictions. At this point, I believe six jurisdictions have had the opportunity to vote. They have all voted positively. We understand that several more will be doing, entertaining this legislation this week and next week, and I think we feel pretty confident that it will move forward. I would recommend adoption. It does improve on the amount of distribution that the city will receive over time, so it will add significant funds to our coffers. As a percentage of the distribution, I think it's important to point out that none of us can say how much more, because we don't know that the totality of the fund may not decrease. It's completely dependent on state revenues. So as everyone here knows, state revenues have been quite robust over the last several years. It has meant an increasing local government fund, which we've all shared the benefit of here in Lake County. But if... should it decrease, the local distributions will decrease as well. Although Mentor will, if you approve this formula, will receive a higher percentage than what we have been over the last 40-plus years under the existing, now defunct formula, but the prior formula.
Okay.
Happy to answer any questions. I know it's...
Ken, thank you for taking the leadership role on this, because this was probably something that the majority of us weren't even aware that there was this imbalance for the last 42 years, so. We'll open up, council.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Mern?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kirschner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Mern?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kirschner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
And just to echo your comments to Mr. Philippiak, so great job to everyone at all. I know it was a lot of meetings, talked to a lot of different trustees, some from Concord, talked to our auditor and commissioners and things of that nature. So it was something a long time coming, and I'm glad we're up to 2024 standards, so that's good.
I appreciate that, councilman. I do want to say that, you know, there were a lot... there was a lot of leadership shown within the county, you know, from really every city and village and township. You know, Mayor Fiala and Township Trustee McIntosh from Concord Township in particular. Bob Ranala was representing the villages. So there was... there were subgroups, there were leaders within the group who represented the interest of each of the components, the subdivisions that were impacted by this. And I've said this before, but I question whether or not this type of agreement could have been realized in 2014, when that resolution was first enacted by the county commissioners. There was less of a spirit of cooperation and common interest in the best interest of Lake County as a whole than there exists today. And there's just a lot of good leadership in the county these days and a lot of people to be commended for their efforts.
Mr. President? Ken, and I just want to chip in too with, I know you've spent a lot of nighttimes and mornings putting that formula together, and I know when we were at Auburn for that meeting and your subgroup to a person all gave you high regard for the job you did in putting that together. I don't think it would have happened without you, without your input on that formula. So congratulations, job well done.
Appreciate that, councilman.
Okay. Resolution number 24-R-108 has been approved. Next is resolution number 24-R-109.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to prepare and submit a grant application to the Ohio Department of Natural Resources H2O Ohio Wetland Grant Program for stream restoration at Blackbrook Golf Course and declaring an emergency.
Ken.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have the benefit of Mr. Grippi, our grants coordinator here. I'll ask him to speak on this, please.
Thank you, Mr. Philippiak, and thank you, council. This is a grant application we submitted last year to ODNR. It's called H2O. It's a $235,000 grant application. We took the comments we got from ODNR last year and answered their comments, retooled it, and we're resubmitting it. It requires a 0% match. It's 100% grant, and it's going to redo Blackbrook Stream and hopefully improve the golf course and improve the habitat and prevent a lot of the issues downstream in the marsh from happening. Any questions?
100% grant. Can't beat that.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Mern?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kirschner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Mern?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kirschner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Okay. Resolution number 24-R-019 has been approved. Second readings, we have none. Third ratings, we have none. Managers report. Ken.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council. Council, the senior center is hosting an open house on Thursday, June 20th, from 2:00 to 3:30 p.m. Anyone 55 and over is invited to attend and check out our wonderful facility and all the amazing things that we offer there. So we asked everyone to spread the word to their family members, neighbors, and friends. There'll be free homemade cookies, sandwiches, and drawings for door prizes for all attendees. And I don't think we'll turn away anyone under 55, because I think there's interest there in general. The Wildwood Arts and Wine Fest will take place on Saturday, June 22nd, from noon to 6:00 p.m. at the Wildwood Cultural Center. The event will feature over 65 booths filled with a wide variety of arts and crafts that attendees can purchase. We'll have live music, as well as great food and fine wine from local and regional wineries. New attractions this year include art demonstrations, theatrical performances, and instrumental performances. There will be free children's activities as well, plus free tours of the historic Manor House. Admission is $2, but children 10 and under are free, and the event will take place rain or shine. Cultural arts programming at Wildwood is presented by Medical Mutual and supported by the Cleveland Clinic, Let's Go Insurance Services, Lincoln Electric, Mimi Vanderhaven, and Tour Lake County. And residents can get more information on that event as well at the Wildwood website, which is wildwood@cityofmentor.com. Tom Frank Enterprises has completed installation of the new 6-inch water main on Bryson Drive and has converted all the residents' residential services to the new water main. Restoration has begun and will... and is estimated to be complete the first week of July. They also began construction activities last week on the Silvermount Drive Water Main Replacement, which is an Aqua Ohio project. The project will replace approximately 300 feet of existing water main with a new 8-inch water main from 7595 Jeremy Drive to 6639 Silvermount Drive. Installation is anticipated to be completed in just two weeks, including drive replacement and lawn restoration, and traffic control will be maintained during any lane closures that will be resolved from that. And finally, council, we have one new business to announce this evening: Tammy's Browse at 7641 Manor Avenue. So we appreciate their investment in our community and wish them fantastic success going forward. That's all.
Okay. Great. Thank you, Ken. Next is Clerk's Correspondence. Julie.
Council is in receipt of the Manor Municipal Court, May 2024, month-end report, and that is all.
Okay. Commission Committee reports. Council, you have the meeting minutes of the Tree Commission, April 10th, 2024. Also, the Board of Building and Zoning Appeals, February 13th, 24, as amended. April 9th, 2024. May 14th, 2024. And the Planning Commission minutes from May 23rd, 2024. Old business. New business? We have an appointment to the BZA to make.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Attorney.
I would like to put up for nomination Jacob Halpern-Lousch for the one elector of the city of Mentor to serve the remainder of the four-year term on the Board of Building and Zoning, ending 12/31/25.
Second.
Second? Okay. Do I hear any other nominations for the BZA position? Hearing none. Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Mern?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kirschner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Okay. Congratulations, Jacob. You're the newest member of our Building and Zoning Appeals Board.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Under new business? You already talked about a little bit our residential study that we received that we purchased over a year ago, and we're going to have a work session on that?
Uh, next week.
Okay. I'm thinking that would be a good idea to televise that meeting. As you know, we have televised certain work sessions in the past. Reason being is that is really the stepping stone from looking at many different ideas that could come out of that study for the future of Mentor, whether it's redevelopment, things of that nature.